2014 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session from 5:30 to 6:30 discussing a individual personnel matter. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any participation in government students here this evening? Okay. It's probably your last night to get this in, isn't it? If you didn't show up tonight, you wouldn't be onstage in a week or two weeks. Your requirement is that you have to stay till nine o'clock. At that time, if the meeting is going on at nine, we'll take a break. You need to come up and do the sign-out sheets, and if there's any papers you need signed, the board members can do that for you. If we're done before nine, you can leave at that time after you sign out. Next is, we have the Oath of Office of a newly-elected board member. Ms. Cunningham had been appointed by the board, just ran for election to a full seat. She will be continuing out in the seat until July 1, and then will be reappointed or sworn in again on July 1 for the full term, so following all legal protocols that we need to do. So, I think Brittany is the -- will be doing the oath of office to you.
Yep. You can do it right over there.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will fully discharge, according to the best of my ability, the duties of office of a board member of the Board of Education.
And that's just a reminder, you also have to sign the oath at the end of the meeting so that it can be on files. Approval of the minutes of the May 21, 2014 regular board meeting.
President, don't we just do introductions?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yep. Well, can we finish? We'll finish the motion and then I'll do that.
Okay.
That's a first.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And I, thank you for our main, forgot to do introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Navarro.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Anne Stever.
Charmaine Widgesinger.
Judy Kehoe.
Next, do we have a representative from the Student Senate this evening? Okay? If you could come up here, there's a microphone up front. We do that because we're being videotaped and you're on TV, too. Now you're nervous, right?
So, today, we had elections, and they were very successful. We're looking forwards to next year, and the results will be out tomorrow. Dodgeball last week was a very successful fundraiser. It was on a short notice, but we didn't meet our, like, quota of how many, how much money we made and everything like that. The blood drive went well last week. All slots were filled up, and it was ran smoothly by the Senate. And for upcoming events, the TV will be mounted in the upperclassman lounge soon, and we're currently working on putting furniture in it, and we're, I think we're in contact with Mr. Landry in terms of the furniture and the TV as well. And the innovation room in the library, which should be like a collaboration room for projects, is being put together right now and should be in full effect next year.
That innovation room is back there, correct?
Right, yep.
Besides those items, what are you using all that money that you guys are raising for?
Well, the TV was, I think, $500 out of our account. I'm not sure. The innovation room, I'm not sure how much money it was also, but a lot of our money.
No, but are there other things that the money is being spent?
Well, we do use it to sponsor clubs, and I think we're going to be using a lot of it to sponsor clubs in the upcoming season because, like, this year is running low right now because it's the end of the year and everything like that. We did give away two $500 scholarships. That's what we're doing.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The superintendent's report?
Yes, President Downey, thank you very much, members of the board. As the school year goes, it starts to come down to a culmination and ultimately to graduation. But there's a lot of activities that take place here at Bethlehem Central, and it's my pleasure, and I know many of our administrators and parents as well as our instructional staff had the opportunity to attend many honor awards receptions, both at the middle school and the high school. And I also want to thank those board members that were able to come out because I know your schedules are very difficult, and you have always given your time to try to honor all the hard work of our faculty, staff, and most importantly, our students. In addition, I've had the opportunity over the past week to travel up to Silver Bay to participate in part of the day for our lab school end-of-the-year conferences that they do with the students, and it was absolutely a beautiful day. So, but because we are working on a bond issue, I had to come back for a later meeting, so I really wanted to go out and the kayaking, but I figured I'd be driving back for an hour with wet pants, and I didn't think that would be the most comfortable ride, so. But the kids really had an excellent time. I got to see some wonderful presenters in Dr. Cosgrove, and I do believe Mrs. Whitman, who is a operetta singer, as well as a professor at the University of Albany. And this is another avenue that helps the students understand a variety of activities, both in and out of the classroom. I was also fortunate enough, as we tried to make sure that our students have the best transitions as they go, as they travel from our elementary schools to the middle school, our physical education staff and the staff at each of our schools in our fifth grade held their annual Survivor Day. Also, wonderful timing, the storm didn't hit until after the students were through with the day, and the kids were having outstanding opportunity both physically and also mentally throughout their challenges on Survivor Day. And it's always nice when you get to travel over to the Elsmere Senior Awards Assembly to see the students from their kindergarten to fifth-grade years all the way up to the point that they're being honored for graduating from B.C. in front of some of their siblings as well as other students from Elsmere. So those are just a few of the happenings that are going on at this time, and that I have the pleasure, as superintendent, to be able to attend and highlight some of our students. One of the things that's coming up this week, which is very important to our girls' softball team, is the final, not the finals, but the regional competition for the B.C. girls' softball program, and that will be in, I believe, Queensberry, and it will be four o'clock on Friday, and it will be our girls going up against Section III champions, which will be Liverpool High School, and it should be a game. The winner of that goes on to the Final Four state championship. So we wish everybody the best, and I know they're trying to organize a fan bus, but I know a lot of people have not signed up for such a wonderful ride. So we're looking at the end of the year. One of the things the board may need to have a little discussion on is the Chinese that we've talked about over the past couple of meetings. We have been doing our advertising. We do have some applicants that have come in. There's applicants that will require some type of sponsorship potentially in order to be employed in the United States, as well as some that are seeking certification. We do not have a clear-cut picture of that yet, but we may want, need some guidance from the board because it will expend an additional amount of money from our budget if we choose to have to sponsor an individual to obtain a position here at B.C. So, other than that, I know we have a couple of presentations. We just wanted to update people and the community as well as the board in regards to Chinese. I'll conclude my report there because we have one more meeting, and we'll be honoring at that meeting some of our end-of-the-year champions. Oh, also, to conclude mine, tonight we do have our tenure recognition that will be later in the procedures for the board's minutes, but we are ready to present those members that are up for tenure to the board for later consideration if the board will allow us to do that at this point.
Yeah. I would say maybe we make a motion to amend the agenda to do that approval of the tenures, and then we could hand out the --
Approve the tenure first.
Right, approve the tenure first and then hand out the --
I think maybe more comfortable.
Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
First, a second. All in favor?
I'll move all the tenure recommendations.
Okay. Professional personnel has recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through N, and the last of those are the tenure recommendations.
Some of them.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? All right, we will now do the tenure.
I'll ask Ms. Monroe to do the roll call for our tenure, and if I can have the board, how about if we position along this side?
It's my pleasure to be announcing our individuals who are receiving tenure this evening. I'd like to first congratulate Rachel Linehan, who's receiving tenure in the area of mathematics. Next, I'd like to congratulate Kathleen McAvoy, who's receiving tenure as a school psychologist. Kyle O'Brien is receiving tenure as a CSE chairperson. And Deana Sanders is also receiving tenure as a CSE chairperson in the district. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Mike Klugman, who's receiving tenure as a middle school And last but not least, Kathy Johnson is receiving tenure as the Director of Special Education and Student Services. And I'm guessing there's going to be a photo opportunity next for all of you. Congratulations again.
tenure. It's not an easy task here at Bethlehem. We hold everyone to very high standards, and you guys have met those standards, so congratulations and good luck with your careers. Next, Board of Education report? I actually looked to Lynn first.
Last Thursday on the evening of the honor ceremony here, I was at the Capital District School Board Association meeting where one of our students, Shannon Haggerty, was awarded one of the volunteer community service awards, and I wanted to congratulate her and thank her and her family for rushing out to East Green Bush and then rushing back here for the award ceremony here. And I just wanted to mention to the board that the speaker that evening was Ken Slence, who's the outgoing deputy commissioner. He gave a good talk about some new developments with the rollout of Common Core, but I do have to say I was rather dismayed in the discussion about the public reaction to the rollout. He was still condemning unnamed outside forces who he said were, I'm paraphrasing, but essentially he was saying that they were poisoning the well and that the public reaction was not based on reality but on these outside forces. And I think we've seen enough evidence that there's plenty of culpability in the procedures for the rollout, and I do have to say I was rather dismayed that he made those statements. But he did present some interesting perspective from the state ed side on things that they've learned through this process, but I did want to bring that to the board's attention.
Yeah, I would think at this point they should understand that it was state ed who was slow or inept in the rolling out of the Common Core standards, not, you know, not any particular groups. So, I mean, maybe some groups took it up as a, you know, to fight on, but it really was state ed who was at fault. It talked about awards and stuff. We talked a lot about the academic awards and the sports awards, whatever, and I neglected to mention at the last meeting about there was a service recognition tee at the high school for students at the high school that had performed service and were recognized by the staff for that service, and I thought that was really a very nice evening. I think it's important to recognize students for how they volunteer also, just like in that other award that you mentioned.
I was able to attend the eighth-grade Pops concert last night at the middle school. It was fabulous. All of the performing groups, the musical groups at the middle school were able to do one or two numbers. It was really a culmination of three years of study there. The music was fabulous, and I believe tomorrow night is the Mosaic concert at the high school, which is also quite a treat for the community with all of the high school ensembles in the main gym performing. The other thing I'll mention is, I was away last week at the National Conference on Race and Ethnicity in Higher Ed, and I was on a panel that dealt with publishing for social justice, writing and publishing for social justice. And we were lucky that 50 people turned out on a Friday afternoon to talk about writing. And it got me thinking about this district and how many fabulous things go on here. I know, for example, we have the Student Tech Desk, we have the new engineering sequence that's going to be rolled out, Mrs. Cullen's Program for High School Young Women, and so I would like to encourage people in the district who think great thoughts or do great things to think about writing those down and publishing them.
I also attended the award ceremony, and it was stupendous. It was really moving to me on a couple of fronts. One was the number of scholarships, not just that are sort of housed in the Bethlehem School District, you know, through clubs and so forth, but there was one young man who graduated from Bethlehem a couple of years ago, attended, attended, I think, a two-year program, came back to Bethlehem, started a business, a very successful business. In fact, I see his billboards all over town, his, I can't remember his first name, but his last name is Fries. And he offered up a scholarship and essentially did so because he was so impressed as a student, and I don't know if he had won a, received an award at some level, but he was kind of paying it forward right then and there, and I'll tell you, that spoke volumes. Wasn't a lot of money, but he really made a powerful statement and a really young guy, and I'm sure he'll be a very successful businessman if he, you know, continues to kind of be thoughtful in that respect. But it was a really, really great event, and just congrats to the district for that. You know, lots of great things going on in the month of June. It's sort of the bookend to that September, you know, write the $10 check every day for this and organizers, and, you know, you don't want to miss that. And now we have the culmination of, you know, the culture fair in third grade that I went to and the concerts and the award ceremonies, and it's just great stuff, and literally every night there is something. And I think many of us attend, but, you know, many of the community members probably don't attend except for the stuff that you go to for your children. As a board, we get to go to more, and it's so worth it. It really makes me proud to be on the board. But one other thought, and I was going to raise this, but Mike, your comments about the presentation sort of prompted me to think about it in a different way. There've been a couple of articles this week in the Washington Post, which is not captured in our clip service that we received from NISMIA. I'll circulate them. But they both focused on a couple of themes. One was sort of the over-testing stuff that, you know, the discussion that is taking place in the public venue that has hit, you know, Bethlehem, not unlike any other district. But it made me realize that as a board member, maybe as a summer project just for me or if other board members need this education, I'm just not clear in my head sort of the testing kind of buckets that we have. I know we have some New York State stuff. I know we have stuff related to Common Core. I also know we do stuff, testing, that benchmarks us against us. I'm not really clear sort of when this takes place, how it takes place. It'd be good, just as a board member, to be, learn about that so that I can fully understand, you know, when people are feeling the pain of that, well, what does that really mean? I hear from my children, of course, but not really from that higher level. And I also think, related to that, it makes me wonder whether or not we're seeing the beginning of a potential bigger ramp-up of people opting out of testing that they can opt out of. It's certainly getting a lot of attention. It doesn't matter if you're in the state of Florida, the state of New York, or wherever. Parents are really, I think, feeling that through their children, and I think it's something that we probably should pay attention to and try to address issues that we can address. And it also is linked, on some levels, and some of the articles kind of spoke to this, to teachers that have children who perform at a certain level, and, you know, I just had a conversation with a friend who is a teacher about this, where the parent, you know, freaks out a little, my son scored at this level, has the conversation with the teacher who says, "Don't worry, you know, I'm not worried about him. He's performing at a, at a higher level." Yet, fast forward the next test, and the child is still sort of at that lower level. Well, now the teacher's feeling the pressure of potentially the APPR piece of it, and, you know, all of a sudden, we have children that are potentially eligible for, you know, some of the, you know, special programming or, you know, the AIS types of stuff. And I just wonder whether or not we're prepared to deal with some of that stuff if that's going to start ramping up. And I just, you know, it's a question. I don't think we know the answer, but, you know, this may be something that's a year away or two years away or three years away or whatever it is, and I think as a board we should be thinking about it and paying a lot of attention to the teaching staff and, you know, the, you know, administrators and, you know, what we're hearing and seeing because they truly have the finger on the pulse of that, you know, of that dynamic. So it just made me think, and I appreciate, Mike, that you, your comments about some of the higher-level perceptions of, you know, the rollout of some of these pieces. They're not all related to that, obviously, so, thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. I think that whole discussion about the testing and what tests are given at what level and for what purposes would be good, I think, and informational for the board.
Is anyone else going to report before I ask a question?
Yeah, I was gonna, no, ask a question.
The report, and I have a question on Tom's report, so.
Well, actually, that was going to be part of mine, too. Couple things. Again, the award ceremony, it's phenomenal, our students that succeed, and the students, not everyone won an award that was there, but they were recognized for their GPA in terms of being 95 or above, and the amount of students that we have at that level is tremendous, and where our students are going on afterwards, whether, you know, a four-year institution or some for the military academies or some two-years or even going into some careers, they do a great jobs once they leave here, so congratulations to all those. Also, Elsmere has their, is it a carnival this coming weekend?
I think it's Slingland's.
No.
Slingland's has a carnival, I guess, I'm trying.
Are you going to be in the dunking booth?
No, I am not. I will be out of town.
Because I signed up to be in the dunking booth, and I thought he was going to be next to me in it, so. I know the entire board was invited to it, but I don't think anyone volunteered, huh?
You're a bigger draw than I am.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Maybe I will come back.
Yeah. So, but I just wanted to say that Elsmere has its Community Day in silent auction this coming Saturday, I know. And then I did, I thought maybe the board would want to have a discussion about Chinese to give some direction to Ms. Monroe and the administration of where we want to go with that. Couple of questions I have. I know we've, we've had the issue of sponsorship and the cost of sponsoring them so that they can get a work visa. We haven't done that in the past for any previous teachers, or have we? Oh, we did? Okay.
Yeah.
And it, they just left after we had done it or during the process?
They left during, right.
During, so we'd expended money and
Right.
You're not able to recoup that.
Right. Because there's no, there's no requirement we can place on an individual to stay.
Was that a single example or have we done it multiple times?
Once, we had to do it.
And the cost?
What kind of costs are we talking about? Well, we never, I mean, you have to eventually get to the point where they, they get a green card, so it's a yearly fee. We essentially pay the attorney fees for filing because there's obviously a ton ridiculous amount of paperwork, and then there's cost involved for the, in order for them to get the visa to continue here. And the additional costs are also in advertising because we have to prove that there's no U.S. citizen available, and you have to do a pretty widespread advertising before you can get to the point where you can do the application and the sponsorship for a green card. So, when you add it all up, if you go to that length, I'm, probably $50,000 or so. And then the person can still leave? Yeah, we can't require anyone to stay.
And so if we had, say we had 12, 13 applicants, and two of them didn't need sponsorship, then we would be required to hire them before we could even proceed with?
Yes.
The songs are qualified.
Well, right.
I mean, it's
Right.
But even starting down that road, there's no
There's no guarantees.
Guarantee that that person will be a great teacher along the way. Correct. Right.
Like, currently, right now, and the application process is closed at this point or still rolling open?
It's still rolling, but technically, it ends tomorrow, but we were going to leave it open.
Yeah, I mean, we'll still leave this open because we said we're trying to search. Right now, we have a pool of candidates, about a dozen, baker's dozen and so forth, but we have to know about the sponsorship issue. Otherwise, roughly 90% of the applicants would not be eligible for the position if we do not choose the opportunity to sponsor and take that risk upon the district.
And there are a few who aren't certified.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't, the application process doesn't prevent them from applying if they're not certified, so.
But at this point, are we, so you have a dozen applicants. You may interview
Not quite a dozen, about 10, I think.
Whatever the number, 10 or whatever, suitable. And then you don't have to make a decision until you are presented with someone that you want to hire, right?
We have to make a decision at some point because we have to know if we don't have a candidate, what the option a candidate, what the options are for the students in the program.
Right, no, understood.
So the other piece of it in our interview process is we typically have a teaching interview. And so, once the school year ends, you don't have the ability to actually observe from someone teaching in a classroom with students. So that's a little bit of a disadvantage.
Right, okay.
So ideally, it's better to be able to see that.
Right. I guess where I'm going is I don't see the downside of exploring the suitable applicants in the 12 or in the 10 that you think are worthy of having, going to the next steps, interviewing and talking and, you know. I mean, you may, at that point, decide, geez, all 10 aren't really of the level, or you may say, wow, there's a superstar in there that I would want to move to the next step.
Well, the question is, is, are we willing to do the sponsorship? Because for any of us.
Without the sponsorship, there's no reason to go forward.
If we wanted to do the. Good candidate.
Right.
No, I understand, but if we weren't open to the sponsorship, why did we bother advertising if we wouldn't even proceed to that next step?
We need to know if the board is hoping to do that sponsorship.
Right, although we knew we were looking at a type of teaching position, that it was very likely we were going to get people in this type of scenario.
And this is what happened in the past, and we did take the chance and then started paying for that process, and then the person decided to take a job someplace else.
Jody, just to clarify, what percentage teaching position is this? Is this a 1.0 or a .8 or?
We advertise this as a 1.0.
A 1.0. And you mentioned $50,000. Was that per year, or, I mean, what would be a total cost over two to three years of a sponsorship before? Do you have an estimate of that?
I don't. I mean, it has, it's been a couple of years before we've done it, so, I don't know, $25, $30,000 maybe?
In addition to the 50, or?
No, no, no.
So 50 would be?
Over two to three years.
Okay.
Probably, you know, $30,000.
Okay.
I can tell you, it's, it's hard to give an estimate for that. We have a student who, or an employee who works for us, who was here on a visa. It ended. She's now living up in Canada, still working for us, and we're trying to get her citizenship. And it's been going on for three or four years now.
Right.
And you never know how many hoops you're going to have to jump through with immigration.
Right, because sometimes what you, what you think might be standard ends up being much more complicated, so it, I mean, that's a rough estimate.
Okay. Do any of those folks who might need, who will need sponsorship have a certi, are they currently certified, or are they seeking certification?
A lot of them are seeking certification. Some, some I think have applied, but it's still pending.
See, the difficulty with that, and that's a very good question. You can apply for certification in New York State, but you also have to prove certain things to a New York State certifying official, and one of them is U.S. citizenship or the ability to obtain a green card. So it's like a chicken and egg scenario, where I can't get my certification, but I can't get my sponsorship, and you sort of have to marry the two together and say, we're willing to go forward. And sometimes the state will move forward, sometimes the federal government will move forward. The problem is, is that's what goes on with the estimate. You don't know. Sometimes they also say, we're not moving forward, we're not moving forward, and we have to sort of urge them along legally. And the cost is entirely on the district.
I guess, I still have a question on the, you said you have to prove that you've tried to advertise, and you've gotten no one who's applied that is a U.S. citizen. But if we have a U.S. citizen, what, and we decided that candidate wasn't acceptable, is that sufficient to say that's why we moved on to?
The, the, there's two issues. Initially, when you're hiring, you have to demonstrate that you're, that that person who's a U.S. citizen is not qualified to teach, under whatever, you know, reason you may have. You could then hire someone who's not a U.S. citizen, and you'd agree to sponsor them. If they, under the sponsorship, once they get to a point where they want to apply for a green card, you have to go through another process, which is much more costly, to demonstrate that you can't, and that's where you get into a lot more national searches and things such as that, to really have the back, the paperwork and the data to demonstrate. So there's, there's two different levels to that.
What's the sense of the board in terms of willing to expend money on the sponsorship?
I mean, we've been cutting for the last several years. I mean, even $30,000 is half of a teaching position, 50, 60,000 would be a full. I mean, we've been doing all this cutting. We're arguing, or not, or I should say discussing, over cuts of $5,000 here and there over the last several years. So it just seems like a lot of money when we may not end up keeping the person, because there are a lot of opportunities out there. We may start down the road and then be in the same situation again and have to start the process all over again with somebody else that may do the same thing. So I'm concerned about, you know, spending that kind of money.
I agree with Lynn with that, too. I mean, we spent the past six, seven, I mean, how many Chinese teachers have we gone through in?
Six and seven years.
Six and seven years, and it's like, and I know that we've talked about, like, the program itself, the students, I mean, it's got to be hard to switch teachers all the time. I know one of the things that we said was we would go to full-time teacher, and that's what we added to, because hopefully we would get more people to apply for the full-time as opposed to part-time. But I have a real hard time with putting, you know, starting processes, paying $50,000 a year, and then not having any guarantee, just for the same reasons Lynn does, just it just seems like we'll be right back here in the same thing.
Can we just get clarification, though? Is it $50,000 a year, or is it $50,000 one time?
Well, over the course of, I'm saying, it'll probably be.
I wanted to clarify, it's not an annual expense.
Unless there's, you know.
Unless we do it every year and we have.
Well, our unforeseen circumstances, that.
But once, once we pay it and they get the green card or whatever, that's the end of the cost. It's not an annual.
Right.
If they go someplace else.
Unless they go somewhere else, or, and then we're starting all over from square one, or they don't work out, or it's not the right fit. I mean, I think anybody.
Each time is a new cost.
Each time is a new cost.
Yep, no.
But, and people can look great on paper, you know, but whether they can teach the students is a whole other thing.
Can I ask you another question? So of the, of the candidates that you have so far, if, if you were going to green light any of them as, as people you would want to talk to based on what you see on a piece of paper of their application, would there be several, one, two, 10, that, I mean, are there candidates that you think on paper look good, I guess, and worth interviewing, notwithstanding the sponsorship issue? Because I'm sort of looking at this almost like a decision tree. The first decision is, you have the candidates, do you choose to interview any based on their qualifications and how they present? If you do that, then you, you know, then the next phase is, after you do that, what's the outcome of that process? Are you down to one? Are you down to none? So this isn't even a conversation that is relevant. If you're, at that point, you still have worthy candidates on the table, it seems to me, then there's a discussion of, okay, what is this cost that we didn't anticipate? Or what is the potential risk that, you know, we want to consider? So I guess I kind of view it as a decision tree. I know it's your time, which is a resource.
It's not, it's not my time, it's the interview committee's time.
No, I understand. It's somebody's time, and that costs money, but I think that personally, it's, at this point, if there are people on paper based on how they presented, I think it's disingenuous of us as a board not to interview them, at least take a look at them.
One of the things, like, when you're talking about a decision tree, and I understand that, that there's many different types of decision trees, and one of them is that you calculate your risk first before you enter into it. That's one form of decision. I agree both ways. That's what we're trying to find out, because we may get down to the end and have a candidate, and then the decision is, it's not worth the risk. Now, that's another part of the decision that needs to be calculated, because we have a lot of people that are relying on a decision by July 15th. So we kind, that's why we're asking for the direction.
No, I get it.
Because we don't want to go through the process and then, all of a sudden, not be able to fund it, and we don't want to go through the process knowing that we have the funding and then not find somebody that we can actually hire.
No, I understand that. It's a fair point. I guess, from my own perspective, without having that information, it's not a decision I would want to make at this point, ruling people out based on something that you may or may not have to decide on, you know, based on the candidates.
Mike, Charmaine?
Hi.
I'm very torn on this issue, because I think, on one hand, we should look at the candidates who have applied, and if there are suitable applicants, go through the interview process. But I am very concerned about the paperwork trail that's going to be needed if we hire any of them. So I'm sorry to be wishy-washy on it, but I, it's, it's a tough question, and, you know, as Joanne said, you know, we may get through the interview process, and this other issue is a moot point, because we may find that there's nobody who's even suitable. So if I had to make a vote at this point, I guess I would say that we should look at the applicants and do some interviewing, and then decide from there where we go.
Charmaine?
Well, you know, it was interesting to hear Thomas talk about the dilemma, that they're basically linked together, so that made me kind of shift my thinking a bit. However, I would, if I lift this totally outside of the realm of Chinese, and then the larger question is, do, does the district pay for immigration visa issue? I'm not, what do we call it? It's not certification, what is it?
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship. Immigration certification.
Yeah, so that, so sponsorship for anybody would be the larger question for me. And so it wouldn't be necessarily department or, or subject-related. It's would, does the district have a policy or procedure or guiding doctrine or guideline? Do we pay for sponsorship for anybody? So, I mean, so that could even be lifted away from the department, because I could see that this is kind of a unique situation, it's a unique skill. So if I look at it in that regard, I'll say, well, maybe we should look at the candidates and see who might be viable. However, if it's the larger question, should, does the district expend money in these times to help anyone with sponsorship, then I would say no. So you understand what I'm saying? It's a larger question of, you know, divorced of this particular situation and topic or subject matter, the larger question is, should we, or should a candidate present him or herself as saying, I am certified and I'm eligible to work in your district, given the requirements of the state and federal government? Do we require that of candidates in general? If that makes sense. Does that make sense?
I see it as, Joanne, since.
I can't hear what you're saying.
That it's worth it if the person is a qualified person. I don't see it as just immigration. I mean, when you're, when you're interviewing people for various positions, part of the contract may come up that you get use of a car as part of the contract. If I want this superintendent, and he wants $20,000 more than I have, we have the grounds to negotiate that. So I see that as a fringe benefit more than I do anything. I'm in agreement with Joanne that if I had the right candidate that I wanted, I would do it. If I don't, I don't care. I'm not doing it, and that can be the excuse. But to me, it depends on the person, definitely.
I wish you could have used another example.
There's very few people we can negotiate the contract with, okay? You, yeah. That's why.
And I think, I think we really, truly want to have a Chinese program here in the district. I believe everybody here at the table wants that. And that may mean we need to spend some money to do it. And I think in the past, probably not now, but historically, districts sometimes will pay a little more than the beginning step of a teacher's salary or something to entice someone to come to the district to work. Again, nowadays, there's a lot of teachers that are looking for jobs, so you don't need to do that. But historically, districts have done that, that they might start them out at different, at a higher step than they normally would, or something to entice someone. So I think we should look at the candidates. If you come back and say, there is no, we, we wouldn't, you know, based on the interviews, the teaching example that they provide, that, you know, we don't think they would be a good fit for the district or for whatever reason, then we don't move forward. But if there's someone you said, you know what, they could be a great teacher, I think you have to take the chance on people. And there's a lot of what-ifs in the world about a lot of different things. I mean, you could have a new teacher come in, and you're going to spend a year or two training them, doing stuff, and then they can leave the district, too. You might not have expended extra money, but, you know, I, I think we owe it to the Chinese program to try to do that.
So if I understand everybody, at least it seems like, at least, the balance of the board at this point is that, depending on the candidate, go through the interview process, and then you'll strongly consider sponsoring somebody, depending on the candidate.
I have a question. Can you conduct the interviews without promising sponsorship?
Yes.
Okay, so I was just to take that route, and then, then come back to the board and then make the argument that we have found the perfect candidate.
Or we haven't.
Or we haven't. But if we have, this is why we want, we would make the argument for sponsorship.
Yeah, that's fine.
Jody, can you let the interview committee know that we're not just looking to find a body?
No, I think.
But we, if there's nobody who's superlative.
Right.
We don't want to proceed.
Right, absolutely.
Are there any, I've picked out of the 12 that are actually citizens and certified?
Right now, I don't think so.
None that have certification in hand.
Well, they can be foreign nationals, they just need the green card. I mean, so it's, right, if someone already has a green card, it's all, you know, my husband has a green card, I mean, he's eligible to work, so.
Right.
It's the folks who don't have a green card that you have to sponsor, who you have to sponsor.
Well, that's most of them.
Yeah, 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 that's what I mean.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else, Charmaine?
That's what I was going to say, because he asked for direction, I wasn't sure if you had heard that.
All right. Moving on. We'll blame Tom for all that time that was taken up. We have the Glenma, Ricky the Robot presentation.
Judy, can you turn that microphone off? Check, there we go. Good evening, Board of Education members. Dr. Douglas, thank you for the opportunity to showcase one of the many technology programs we have here in the district. Tonight's presentation has been made possible as a result of the longstanding collaboration that the district has had with the Bosse's Model Schools Program. Seated in front of you is Ms. Hillary D., the Model Schools Coordinator, and also a district parent. This evening, we're going to turn it over momentarily to Peter Rowwich and some of his first-grade students. The seed for this idea came last August during our Tech for Teaching Academy, where Ricky provided the welcome kickoff that first morning. And I think a vision for the possibilities presented itself in Peter's mind and how it could benefit his students at Glenma. And then also, kind of a special thank you to Ms. Laura Heffernan, the Principal of Glenma, for her continued support in the program. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Peter Rowwich.
So I want to thank you for the opportunity for me to present the highlights of our year with Ricky the Robot. Again, seated in front of you, in addition to Ricky, we have Hillary D. from Model Schools and two very brave students, brave because they're up past my bedtime, which I think is great. We have Paul Ury and Olivia Peters, and in a few minutes, they'll be demonstrating some of the things that they've done with Ricky this year. So we started out in the fall. Hillary came to our classroom, and the very first lesson we learned was that technology is fabulous when it works, and sometimes, sometimes it doesn't. We're hoping this evening that we can prove the former instead of the latter. She was able to show the students how Ricky was able to speak and how Ricky was able to move, and that made an impression on the students. One of the students wrote, "To Ricky, I like you, you can dance." And that meant that the students who were ready now to be thinking about what they wanted Ricky. And that meant that the students were ready now to be thinking about what they wanted Ricky to say and what kind of movements they wanted Ricky to do. So each student had an opportunity to come up with a plan. Their plan included a sentence for Ricky to speak and then a movement to accompany that. The screen on the upper left-hand corner shows what the student would see first. They would select a small box that says, say, they would click on the box. And then the student can type in their statement. And when that was done, they would go on and then look for a motion box, click on that. And then they could choose to have Ricky stand, sit, wave hello, wipe his brow. And then they could, as you can see, some of the boxes are connected. When they're connected, Ricky will do a sequence of, of speaking and movement. And that's what the student sees here. After we started that in September, we moved on to some math activities with Ricky. Because Ricky can walk, we decided to measure how many, how far he would go when he takes steps. So when you typed in for Ricky to walk, we'd find out how many inches it was. From that, we made predictions what would happen if you typed in the walk command twice. And then we could measure to see how accurate that was and go on with other times, multiple times, to see if our predictions were true. What we found was that Ricky is not, not only does he walk maybe different amounts each time, but he's not always stable. And so you'll see the students are prepared to catch him. His body is made of plastic. And so we were very careful with that every time he would move. As the students got used to having Ricky speak and Ricky move, they were getting other ideas of what to do with Ricky. So this child says, next time Ricky comes, can he play soccer? And as you can tell, Ricky likes soccer. He says so right up there. That, that to me was a clue that Ricky was going to, we would need to have the students learn about Ricky's sensors. He has, I think, seven touch sensors, two on his feet, two in his hands and three on top of his head. We did an activity where the students wrote riddles. And with the riddles, there were three clues they had to give. It turns out on top of the head, there are three places you can touch. And the students typed in their three clues. They presented to the class by touching Ricky's head. Ricky would, would say the clue they had typed in. The students would then try to guess the answer to the riddle. And one of the students could touch one foot or the other foot to indicate they had, had given the correct answer or it was a nice try and to guess again. So they're beginning to learn again now that Ricky can speak, how he can move and how some of his sensors work as well. It did come to pass later in the fall that Ricky had an accident. I'm happy to say it's not under our watch. It was at another school. And there's the Band-Aid to take care of him, but that was okay. Well, we couldn't use Ricky. It provided another writing opportunity for us. In this case, we could send him get well cards. Dear Ricky, I'm sad. You hurt your leg. I hope you feel better. And in addition to doing some writing in Ricky's absence, we could also do reading, both information books and stories. And of course, it impressed the class no end that Ricky's on the cover of one of the books too. So a lot of high interest there and a connection to the real world. It also raised the issue of whether it was a good idea to teach a robot to read. And there were different opinions in our class, whether that was a, a good decision. So we did some of our opinion writing on that. The way that Ricky would learn how to read is in addition to having sensors, he has two cameras on his head. And if you show Ricky a letter or a word or a black and white image, Ricky takes a picture of it, stores it in his memory. You assign a spoken value to that picture. And the next time Ricky sees the picture, Ricky says, your word is. And therefore, you begin starting, starting to teach him how to, how to read. You'll see my students demonstrate that momentarily. So we had some opinions about that. One girl said, my opinion is that people should teach robots to read because some people have a hard time reading. And another reason is that some people want to read, but they can't read many words. My friend William agrees because some robots can't read. Some people say robots should not read. I think robots should read. And again, you would think that that would be great because then we'd all teach Ricky how to read if, if everyone agreed. But this is first grade. They didn't all agree. It turns out that Alice had a different idea. She said, my opinion is you should not teach robots to read because they might not work. Another reason is they can break. For example, once I tried teaching him cake, but he didn't work. That was back to our first lesson about technology, how wonderful it is, except when it isn't. She said, my friend Aiden agrees with me because it didn't help him a lot. Some people say you should, but I still think you should not. Well, even with our divided opinions, we decided to go ahead and try teaching Ricky first to read letters and then going on to read words. So I'm going to invite Olivia and Paul to start showing you how they're going to teach Ricky to read some words. The goal being that he will read a two-part sentence. So one of the first things you're going to, one of the first things that happened was that the students back in the classroom wrote down a word. Again, Ricky's ability to read is based on his memory of black images on a white background. Okay. So they, they taught some words. Every student in the class actually had the opportunity to, to teach Ricky some words. They were writing it down first. After that, they hold the word up. You can see Olivia's doing that now in front of you. Hold the word up and Ricky takes a picture of it and stores that in his internal memory. It might not surprise you that his memory is actually inside the head unit. And when he has difficulty processing that information and you need him repaired, you could actually take the head off and just send that for repairs. And that happened earlier, a few months ago. Ricky was having difficulty with his memory. Once he'd finished that, the students then have to type in a value for the word they're showing. So they would type it in. Speaking of teaching foreign language, it's possible you could actually have a word in English and then type in a Chinese pronunciation for that. So that when Ricky then becomes a translator, when Ricky sees the English, he could speak the Chinese. That wasn't meant to throw a monkey wrench in your plans for hiring, but Ricky, Ricky is available, I believe, this summer. So right now, the, the students are, are showing you, again, are demonstrating how they're, they're having Ricky take pictures there. I would let you know that at the beginning of the year, one of the things that Olivia was interested in doing was teaching Ricky how to fetch. It might not surprise you that Olivia said at the beginning of the year that she knows a lot about puppies. I think there's a connection between those two. And then Paul, in the beginning of the year, said that he was interested in the fetch idea too, but he wanted to be able to fetch sticks that he threw. So again, that was their thinking at the beginning. And some of the things that they were interested in learning, Olivia, the beginning of the year, said she was interested in learning more about cheetahs. But we just had our recent parent, student, teacher conference. And now this summer, she was going to do some work on learning about horses, which would be one of her new interests. I think Ricky's just about ready to. To get his first part of a sentence. So I'm guessing the words are in his memory. We'll see if he can recognize some of the words. And we'll get the microphone close to Ricky if you can't hear him.
Your word is Ricky. Your word is a. Your word is s. Your word is a. Your word is talented. Your word is reader. Your word is reader. You sentences. Ricky Ricky is his reader reader.
So after they put the first, the first sentence in, then Olivia touched the top of the head as a touch sensor to have him read that. I'm running on time. They can finish the sentence or I can finish up the, wrap this up if you'd like? Well, okay. There's a second part of the sentence that's important too. See, while they're doing that, I would tell you more about Paul. At the beginning of the year, Paul said that he was interested in learning more about how the brain works. That was his interest in the fall. And now his interest for the summer was to learn more about sharks and about Yale. So you, you can ask him questions about that a little bit later on. I think it's connected to how the brain works. I think there's a connection there. When we did this activity in the classroom, Ricky was right in the middle of the room on the table. And I'm happy to say that by having Ricky come about once a month to our class, it desensitized the students. As you can imagine, in the fall, having a walking, talking robot in the room would be highly distracting to six and seven-year-olds. By the time we got, last month, working with Ricky, he was just another member of our class. And the students were able to successfully do other activities while they took turns working with Hillary and the robot. The computer language that Ricky uses is called Python. One of my goals this summer was to, to learn more about that. Let's see if he's ready to.
Your word is because.
To read the end of the sentence.
Your word is we. Your word is programmed. Your word is him. Your word is him.
Will it play?
No, it just went away.
It's gone away. Okay.
But wait, wait. You want to hear it just right?
Something else? The song and dance? Yes. Well, actually, I could show you a, a, a song while we're waiting. It's a forty-second song. I wanted you to see that the activity that the students did on the screen here was that we took the classic hit Row, Row, Row Your Boat. And we changed the words to Row, Row, Row Bot. And the students each had a turn to teach Ricky a word from that song. And then we were able to perform the song with Ricky. So if you'll bear with me for forty seconds while we get the computer set, here is our, our version of Row, Row, Row Bot with Ricky the Robot. See if this works.
Three, row, row, row. Three, four, five. I'm programmed to say each word someday. I'm programmed to say each word someday. It's our turn. Row, row, row.
Is the robot ready to, to read?
He's ready to say it.
Okay.
Ricky is a talented reader because we programmed him.
So.
Oh, you thought it was too fast?
Yes, our future programmers have definite opinions about things, including how he speaks.
All right, Paul said we should slow it down, so.
Ricky is a talented reader because we programmed him.
So Ricky, Ricky has learned a lot. Ricky has learned a lot this year. We've learned a lot this year. Just to take one more minute just to finish up. I wanted you to know that thirty years ago, I brought my first robot into a classroom at Glenmont. The robot that you see there is one that made of plastic. It's programmable. It had buttons on the top. The students learned how to, commands that they could use. That's from 1985. That's when the proposed school budget was $17.5 million. I think we're up to ninety-something at this point. So that, that was a while ago. And the other picture in the corner from that article actually has our Apple II Plus computer. And there's a, a turtle shell or a plastic shell with a robot that's a turtle and the wires connected. My students thirty years ago were programming robots from a, a computer as well. As I say, we've learned a lot from Ricky. Ricky has learned how to read as well. And our goal was to make Ricky part of the class. And we think we were very successful. So thank you so much.
Can we ask you a few questions, kids?
You sure can.
All right. What was it that you? What was it that you liked the most about Ricky?
I really just liked how, well, I liked how we got the program.
Programming? That's great. How about you? What, what'd you like the best about Ricky?
Um, I like that, um, he can read.
Can read? That's great. Any other board members have any questions for?
What's the funniest thing Ricky ever did?
Once, remember when it didn't work for Alice? Once he said C-C-K-K.
Well, congratulations. We have a special pin for each of you. It's our eagle pin we give to students. There you go. Congratulations. Nice job.
It actually did work for me, but I did it.
Thank you for that presentation. Stuff like this really makes it be worthwhile to be a board member, doesn't it? Yep?
Is Ricky fully healed now?
Can Ricky do the energy performance contract presentation?
He's a little undercharged.
Sounds like Ricky's dying. I think they took the head off. Next up is, we have a energy performance contract presentation. For the PIG students, we have hired a firm to come in and basically kind of do an energy audit. See where we can make improvements within the district. And the energy performance contract would basically be paid for through the savings that we would be obtaining through the energy efficiency. I believe that's, probably captures it at a very high level. But we'll let the presentation go on.
Well, thank you. I'm not sure how we're going to follow that.
I said everything, huh? No.
We have a boring update. We'll make sure to have Ricky at our next update. I don't think you guys even have a song. So tonight, we, we're going to give you an update on the energy performance contract. We have our energy performance contractor here, which is J.W. Danforth. We have Steve Duramo, Jerry Wilson and Scott Janson in the back. And then as well, we have our energy performance consultant with us, and that's Dave Newman. So we're going to turn it right to Steve and we'll get on it.
We should have brought a robot. I didn't realize you had the robot thing. We're going to try to give you a little project update, give you an overview of what we found as we went through the process in developing the performance contract for you. I have the ability to sit down and explain what types of measures we're recommending to be installed as part of the performance contract. Kind of give you a timeline of where we are today and how this would kind of play out. Go over the project financials with you so you'll know how much things cost, what your savings, where some of the funding's coming from. coming from, go over with the board actions that would be needed, and then follow up with, you know, question and answer period. So I kind of laid this out for you to kind of figure how we got to where we are today. So, you know, back in January of 2013, the district issued an RFP to put out an RFP for a performance contract. Danforth presented back here, which I think was maybe June 12th of 2013, about a year ago. On October 16th, the board selected Danforth as their energy service provider. And over the last several months, we've been working closely with the district, with Greg's office and Dave Newman, to put together, you've heard the word detailed energy audit. This is kind of what was presented to the district. As you can see, it's a large volume of information that we need and you need to evaluate this going forward. So what happened was, once we did our initial walkthrough, we presented an initial audit to the district, and then the district took it, and then, on what we told them, looked at measures that they thought were in the best interest of the district. And then we took those back, we redid the audit again, and then again, it was submitted back to the district and to ECG for some technical review to make sure that the things that we were presenting technically made sense, scope-wise made sense for the district, and that kind of cumulated into this document here that was provided to the district to detail everything that's going to happen going forward. So what we came up with, of all the measures that are being presented as a project, it's about four point two million dollars. The first measure being is the district would get a district-wide lighting upgrade, so ninety-five percent of the district lighting would be upgraded from the fluorescent technology to the LED technology. And I don't know if anyone had a chance to visit the middle school, but remember, in some of the initial conversations that we had, there was this dilemma. Do we stay with the old technology? Do we put in the new technology? We presented to the district that as part of our thing, we would submit some test sites. So if you've been there, or if you get a chance to go there, in the middle school rooms, 113, 111, 133, we installed the older technology right next to the newer technology, and that's actually been sitting in that classroom now since December. So it's been in six months. People have had a chance to take a look at it. Part of that evaluation, we actually were able to use the newer technology and actually reduce some of the lamps that we thought we would because that technology was so good, and we were getting a good amount of light out of there. The district-wide also includes LED upgrades for the exterior of all the buildings, so the parking lights, all the wall packs on the buildings, all those would be upgraded as well. And then as part of that, there'll be some control upgrades. In some of the classrooms, we'll be putting in occupancy sensors to basically turn off lights when people are not in there. District has some of that already. We've just laid over and completed the district as a whole now. So that's a big measure. As part of the measure, we originally thought, there was two boiler plants in the high school, if you remember, and there was a plant E and a plant F. At the time, we thought the new boilers were in plant E, and we were going to combine those two boiler plants together to a single boiler plant. As we went through that kind of investigation, the cost to do that for the energy that was going to be saved didn't really pan out. So the E plant being the newer plant and the F plant being the older plant, under this program, we are going to take the old F plant, remove all the boilers, and put in four new boilers, two of those condensing, two of those non-condensing. And technically, the reason being is the non-condensing boiler is a much more efficient boiler. It's a little more costly, and really only works in the shoulder mounts when you're in between. It operates at a much better efficiency. So we did a combination for you. There'll be two non-condensing to save money, and then when the plant is under a lot of load, the plant will switch to those two boilers and provide you an efficiency there. When the load gets low, the plant will switch to the other two boilers and run on the more efficient boilers. At the middle school and the high school pools, you know, there's been an issue in the district with those issues with humidity and not having any heat recovery. So at the high school, the high school will get a brand-new heat recovery unit at the high school to replace an existing air handle that's in the high school now, along with the existing Dektron unit. The middle school really never had any heat recovery, and that is also getting a new heat recovery unit. So what's going to happen now, as you know, to control the humidity in that space, air is exhausted out of that space, and all the heat goes with it. So now with the heat recovery unit there, the heat will pass, the incoming air will go past the exiting air and transfer that heat that's leaving the building and put it back into the pool area so that you can save a lot of energy there in terms of just blowing that air outside. In Eagle Elementary and the high school, we did a transformer upgrade in those two specific areas. One, that we knew of a known problem with Eagle, with the electrical system there that we were told to take a look at. And then at the high school, being older, the older transformers don't really deal well with a lot of the harmonic loads that are present in today's electronic. So we're going to upgrade the electrical transformer in the high school and also at Eagle Elementary. As part of our due diligence of walking around, there's a lot of insulation that ends up being missing or not put on pipes that are in unheated spaces, which causes heat to be lost into the unconditioned spaces. So as part of this, the whole district-wide, there's numerous spots of areas where going back and re-insulating fittings and valves and pipe to keep the heat in the pipe until it gets to its final destination, a classroom and office building. At Elsmere, getting new windows at Elsmere. And there was a couple of iterations with the district to try to pick and do one school into one facade, so it wasn't a piecemeal thing. So we put all the money for the windows into Elsmere. You're getting a district-wide energy envelope upgrade, so all doors will be resealed, all soffits and joints where buildings meet get all insulated, so there's no infiltration, exfiltration from the outside or losing heat to the outside. District is also getting that mandated, as we do a lighting upgrade, SED makes us do the lighting controls that I spoke about. Now, in the boiler rooms that we're not upgrading, so the boiler rooms at the high school's getting new boilers, they get modulating burners. The boilers that are in Elsmere, Slingelins, and Glenmont, they're not modulating type boilers, so we're going to add a control, basically a control system on top of those boilers to make it operate as a newer boiler, but obviously the guts of it are not being changed, just the intelligence on that. At the middle school, where you have the big walk-in freezers and freezers, coolers, those controls are going to be put on those as well to basically help save and reduce energy there as well. The high school IT room, where in the middle of the high school, you've got that small IT closet, which is constantly providing heat to cool the equipment. We're now going to add a new air handling unit on the roof, and then when the temperature and the humidity go below the set point of the existing cooling equipment, that will turn on and will use outside air, primarily in the winter, to bring in air to cool that, so you're not running those units all year long. And then lastly, vending mizers, putting on controls on snack machines and, you know, soda machines where non-perishable, we can change the temperature a little bit. When people are not around, the machine basically goes to sleep when no one's there and puts it through. So the culmination of all that is around four point two million dollars for all those upgrades. So what's kind of the timeline? So obviously, we're here today, June, to get approval to move forward with the presented scope. Once we get the approval, then we would now then work with ECG to create the submittal package for SED. So now you would get all the final drawings, plans, specifications, just like you would for a capital project, and that would be submitted to SED. And the timeframe we're looking to do that is, you know, around September-ish, maybe, you know, August, September. Right now, the way that SED is running, that that approval process is, you know, it moves, but we're figuring it's basically about a six-month approval process from the time that we submitted into SED before we get the approval out. So we're looking at, you know, a spring construction, you know, probably come out sometime in April, March, April. And then we would have a construction cycle from April 2015 to October 2015. Final project closeout, November of 2015, and then starting in January, as you know, what makes the performance contract different from a capital project is that we're here after the project is here, and all the things that we've promised in terms of energy savings and how things would work, Danforth stays with the district and provides you an annual report to verify to you that what we told you was going to happen actually happens, and that savings is realized for the district. Like Matt said, this is being presented as a budget-neutral, you know, proposal to the district. So what does that look like? Overall project cost is four point two million dollars. Right now, we've anticipating that NYSERD or ANDOR National Grid for this project, with the measures that I've just described, would generate approximately $300,000 in incentives from those two agencies, maybe some from one, or maybe all from one. They do, depending on what we do, they do have better incentives. So we are going to start, once we get the approval process, to start submitting that paperwork. Right now, the estimated payback of this would be fifteen years. There would be an annual district payment of approximately $365,000, projected annual utility savings of $248,000, and then an estimated SED funding of $171,000, which basically leaves the district in a cash positive, once all the bills are paid, of approximately $53,000. And over the accumulation of time, over the project, the district would save $1.4 million over the time of the, over the fifteen years. So I guess what we're asking the district to do is to review the submitted documentation, and there is a lot of documentation. It's fairly easy read if you look at the district. It's broken out by section, so you can see. I mean, it looks daunting, but it's really not. No, it is.
Yeah, right.
So I mean, just to give you an idea. So the sections that are broken out, there's a section in that, basically an executive summary, which we've kind of summarized here that gives you the big picture. There's a scope section in there that if you want to get real detailed into what's being presented, it's written out for you. The metering that we done is in there, so we did come in and put metering equipment in the district to verify runtimes of equipment, how long things are on. That information's in here. There's cut sheets of the proposed equipment that's going to be installed. There's lighting documentations. You can see each individual room, what's going on. So it is onerous, but it is well-laid out to provide easy reading. To adopt the scope, to adopt a seeker, no declaration impact on the project, and then ultimately to adopt a resolution to authorize the district, us and ECG to provide the paperwork and the submittal package to go to SED so that we can get approval on SED funding, so that we can submit all the paperwork to the utility in NYSERD to lock in the incentives. And then when we get that back, everything at that point, you'll know exactly what's going on. Everything would be guaranteed into that contract. And then, starting that final year, we'll be with you to make sure that everything performs, you know, as it should. So again, you know, a little district of what you're getting, there's quite a bit of stuff there. So I don't know if anyone has any particular questions on that. I know it's a lot to drop on you in a short period of time, but.
Does anyone have a, yeah.
Can you go back to the slide near the end, give the costs and the reimbursement?
Right here?
Guarantee, yeah.
Yeah.
That one. How do you actually compute that savings on an annual basis? Because how do we know for sure that, you know, we're going to get that payback in seventeen years? I mean, how could we be sure of that? Because you change the lighting, but, you know, when you pay for electricity, you're not paying for room by room. You know, it's not-
Yeah, you'll see, as part of what we've done is, we've gone through the district, school by school, and looked at what your utility bills are now, and it's in this particular report. So we took all your bills. We understand what you're spending for electric, what you're spending for gas. Now, when we look at the savings methodology, we will look at a particular, like a lighting fixture. So what we didn't know right now, I can tell you what the wattage of a particular fixture is now, and I can certainly tell you what the wattage of the new fixture is going in. And if you look inside this document, we took personnel from the district, and we went out and measured that. So we proved, here's what the wattage is now, here's what the wattage is afterwards. What we didn't know is how long does that light on? So what we did is, in the high school, in the middle school, in Eagle Elementary, we installed equipment, monitoring equipment, in a classroom, in the gym, in an office, and in a hallway to say, okay, how long are those lights on? And then that's, you know, that's part of this data package that we give you. So now we know what the wattage was before. We showed you what the wattage was after. We've demonstrated to you in those classrooms what the light level would be. And now we take the wattage from before, minus the wattage what was after, multiply it times the runtime, and we know what the KWH is. So the only thing to get you to dollars now is to take what you're paying for electricity, multiply that times that KWH, and that's what you would save. And each individual measure is done that way. And it's broken out in the contract per measure. So what'll happen as part of putting this contract together for you is to provide you with the language and the mathematical computation that ECG will review with us to ensure that those things are accurate and that the information that we're providing with you is accurate. And then we do that before and after.
So the cost, is the cost stationary then, even though the cost will go up over time?
No, I mean-
Per kilowatt hour?
Yeah, I mean, we've made-
I'm just using that as a-
No, no, that's a good one. I mean, what we can guarantee to you is how many therms you might save and how much the KWH that you would save. Your electric cost obviously floats a little bit, and traditionally moves up at a steady rate. So as part of that process, we're assuming that there's probably about a two percent increase on those costs over time. So maybe that goes up one year and moves down and goes up a next year, but traditionally, historically, it increases over time. So each year, when we do the calculation for you, we would find out what you're paying now for electricity, make that calculation, and demonstrate to you, this year, this is what you saved. Because it is, it does move a little bit. It's not, it's not as static in terms of what you pay on the unit basis here.
My question's kind of connected. So that monitoring equipment, that's a temporary, install that temporarily, just to establish kind of the base?
For the lighting, yes. Some of the other monitoring that goes, so what the district has, it has some, through the energy management system, we have some capability of monitoring certain things because you have that equipment installed. The lighting, you didn't have installed, so we had to bring it in. And on the control system, when you look through here, we monitor through your control system how long things were on, and that's going to stay.
Okay. So for the equipment that doesn't stay, suppose, I'm just trying to think of a scenario where you sort of establish that benchmark, and then you guys leave and say, okay, you guys are all set. You're good to go. You're going to save all this money. And then all of a sudden, the look back is, well, we didn't really hit that threshold, but you know what? We're not really sure where, you know, the problem was.
Yeah, I mean-
Is that possible? Does it happen?
That was one of our concerns. The M&amp;V is a process that I've, it's complicated, and one of the reasons why we hired an expert on that, and that's ECG. SED requires the M&amp;V, the measurement and verification, for one year. We got these guys for three, okay? Because we felt exactly for that reason. I mean, you put a light in, you know, some of these things are measurable, some of these things are calculated. You know, we're taking out a 32-watt, we're putting in a 16-watt. We know that that runs for eight hours a day. You can calculate it. We know that we spend X amount, and it's very factual, okay? Over the course of the next two, three years, I really don't expect that light, you know, to change, especially anything that they did. There are efficiencies that are tied into the age of that light, but for the most part, they've done what they were supposed to do, okay? So really, after that is kind of like on our dime, I guess.
Right.
So Dave, do you have maybe an easier way to talk about this?
Well, one of the things is the longevity. After you go through the three, roughly the three-year M&amp;V or the monitoring and verification, one is, this is the time with the guarantee that if something isn't going the way that it's supposed to on the projection, it's up to Danforth to come in to correct. Otherwise, they must continue to cover that cost. So that's one of the safety valves. The other part is, and I'm sure that'll be explained, is that through that three-year of M&amp;V, a lot of things don't change in year four, five, six, and seven because you're monitoring it consistently. Where you run a risk, and, you know, I can't pretend to know why state ed puts its own regulations in sometimes, but they only require one year. Personally, I think state ed should require on these projects at least a minimum of three, maybe up to five. But that's state ed. We're opting to take a more conservative route to make sure that we have those guarantees built in as well as more consistent predictability.
Thank you. Just to, maybe to give a little overview of how the calculations and the savings are derived. And Steve kind of hearkened on it a little bit, that a lot of monitoring and a lot of metering has been done. There's kind of two elements of this. One is, there's electrical savings and there's thermal-
One is, there's electrical savings and there's thermal savings that come in a project like this, and there's standard protocols that have been, were actually established by the federal government, um, called an A MVP, measurement and verification protocols, and they set standard guidelines on how things are to be measured and to be verified over time. And they've been developed over a long period of time to be very consistent and very well-defined. For electrical measures like lighting, they're very consistent in their, in their performance. They're very measurable, they're very repeatable. It's very easy to know that if I take a thirty-two watt bulb out, and I put a twenty-eight watt bulb in, I know what that delta is, I know what the wattage change is, and if I've done metering, the behavior in a school, the way a school is operated, is generally very consistent. I know how many hours in a total amount, I know the general times that people are occupied or not occupied, so it's very repeatable and very consistent. So, I can predict it. I, once I know what that behavior is, it's very repeatable, and I can expect that to happen. Now, if a major change happens in the district, and the district is aware of that, you choose to run a school at night, when you didn't before. There's a mutual agreement between Danforth and the district that we acknowledge, there was a change that's significant, and we mutually agree on that change, and we account for it. So, if you do make a change that increases use, the district does have to pay or account for the fact that you've chosen to run longer. But, we account for it, and we, we kind of deduct that from the guarantee element, so that Danforth is still on the hook for the savings that occur during the periods that were part of the contract. And that's really how we address that type of issue. The one thing to, to realize, though, that your increase of use, because you put in more efficient equipment, you're still in a better place than you were, because you're running more hours, but you're running equipment that's more efficient for those hours. So, it's still an advantage, you're still saving money, it's just that you have to account for the fact that you chose to run longer. For, sure.
So, I ask one more. So, you know that chart that shows the projected savings?
Mm-hmm.
Is the board gonna see, like, each year, that chart with the projected and then the actual next to it?
Yes.
So, we can track that to that.
That's right. And one of the key things that was mentioned was that the guarantee is based in units, it's not based in dollars. So, what we're, what is being guaranteed is a certain amount of kilowatt hours being saved, a certain amount of thermes, a certain amount of gallons of oil. We can't control the price of the utility, that's true, but realize that, because I'm reducing a unit, as, as utility prices increase with time, you actually save more. So, the key, when we developed this program, it's something that we've been working with Danforth on, is what is the base, what is the, the basis price we're gonna use to base the, the original project on, and make sure that those prices are not overly aggressive? We want a price that's historically realistic to what you really pay, and is realistic that prices are gonna increase over time. And we're at a point where we feel comfortable that the project is founded on, on conservative values, so that over time, as utility prices go up, you actually, in reality, even though you're paying more, you're actually reaping a larger benefit, because you've cost-avoided. You've avoided those increasing costs on the utility units that you're not using.
That's one thing that happened two days when we, when we presented with the original data, and then we came back.
That's a very good point.
I should probably mention that, cause that did.
Actually, that's, actually, one very good point of that, is, um, when the original RFP was put out, utility rates, this is a very strange time, actually, that utilities have actually dipped a little bit, mainly because natural gas prices have gone down, which is sort of an anomaly. It's not gonna last, but for right now, that's where we are. When we came through and did the final project, one thing that happened was, we took a second look at the utility rates and said, we know that utilities are not increasing right now, and the district negotiated a new contract on its, uh, electric power that actually affected a better rate. So, we, the project that has been developed has actually been down-adjusted to where the rates are now, so that we're starting at the lower value, cause we, cause we do expect that things are gonna climb back up with time. Um, if, had we used the older values, that could create a problem, because we used aggressive values, and the util, the real utility price could've gone below that. Um, and then, at that point, the physical dollar amount would be less, um, you'd be paying less, but the amount of dollars promised would be less too. And we, that's what we don't want to have happen, we want to have the opposite happen.
Thank you.
Okay? Charmaine?
It, it looked like most of the work, you said it was gonna take place between April and October of two thousand fifteen, I believe. Are there aspects of the work that lend themselves better to when students aren't here, this, to when students aren't, I mean, I imagine you're gonna manage all of that?
Yeah, and boiler work, obviously, we have to do boiler work when we're in non-heating season. Um, windows, uh, you know, is another area, um, that we really need the buildings to be empty to do that work. So, the fact that we're kind of targeted to hit a coming summer is, is good, is good timing.
Is that summer two thousand fifteen?
I think.
Yes.
Everybody, Scott Bolores is here from Construction Management. How is that being coordinated between our capital bond and that, and are, have we even started that?
It will be very smooth. Um, that's one reason why Scott is here in part. Um, it'll be another aspect of next year's work.
Okay.
A lot of the work can happen second shift, a lot of lighting work can happen second shift. It's part of the industry. Um, we'll do as much as we can without impacting any program, but, like we said, things like boilers and windows will have to happen during the summertime.
My, my big concern is roofs, windows, open doors, open windows, hot oil, uh, making sure that the coordination and safety is there.
Anyone else, any questions? I just have a question on the, the transformer upgrades. I mean, you talk about Eagle Elementary, I mean, that's a fairly new school that's been built very recently, and I know the high school had new transformer put in as part of the ninety-two million dollar bond act right out front. Are we talking about that same transformer being upgraded and?
I don't, I would have, I don't believe any of the transformers we have are in.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I don't believe any of the transformers we have are in the capital project.
No, but I'm saying, with, with old capital projects, those transformers are fairly new. I guess, why are we up, why do we need to upgrade them?
What, um, we actually encountered this quite a bit. In capital bond work, because of costs, traditional transform, traditional standard-type transformers are, are what, are installed. Fortunately, they don't really meet the load profiles of a school district, particularly with all the computer loads in the buildings. These are what they call NEMA TP1, or CL3 units, which are specifically designed for the type of loads that are in the building, and that's why they get the savings that they do. So, unfortunately, even though the transformers physically aren't that old, they're of the traditional type that, or not driven for efficiency, they're, they're less expensive, but they're not efficient.
Are the transformers high harmonica type?
Yeah, these are, these are, um, it's interesting to see, the, the old transformers, even some of the, the, uh, fairly traditional ones, you know, how they buzz and they, they give off heat, these don't. Um, they're harmonically matched, um, so they don't dissipate energy as heat, um, which is really the, the key with these. They're, they're very high-quality winding unit, units in them, high-quality copper bounds, that, um, that are designed specifically not to dissipate, particularly when they're, ironically, with the transformer, they, they lose most of their energy when they're not loaded, uh, and that's what these are tuned to do, is to, is to be tuned when they're not loaded to not be dissipating.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
All right. I think we can probably get through the rest of it before nine.
Next, uh, recognition of visitors. Uh, at this ti, this time is set aside for visitors to address the Board of Education on any agenda item. If you'd come forward and state your name for the.
Christine Beck.
Yep.
I just wanted to address the board on the Chinese issue, not to belabor it any, any further, but I've had a student that was in the program for five years in Bethlehem, and we've had, we had five different teachers in five years, and, um, that teacher taught five different preps, five different sections of a class, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth, and that teacher had to drive back and forth between the middle school and the high school every day. I don't know how they got there, but they had to get there, and there was a lack of availability for the teacher after school at both the middle school and the high school, because they can't be at the same place twice. Um, I just want to comment on what Dr. Douglas said, that you have to assess the risks first. In our history on retaining a teacher in the Chinese program has not been positive or successful at this time. So, I wouldn't recommend, um, investing additional money based on the risk, but if we do have a candidate that has the right experience to teach five different preps, and doesn't require additional costs from the districts, then I would, I would support it, but I just wanted to give you that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna address the board on an agenda item? All right. Item number ten, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C.
So moved.
That's the first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're having a food service presentation in a future meeting, don't we? Next meeting. Next meeting, okay, in more detail, correct? Yeah, I think so. There's a food service report, but I think we're getting a more detailed report next me, next meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask sort of a similar question. And any, um, projection of when the new food service dir, uh, director, I guess, will be kind of on board, or?
Yeah, second round of interviews are tomorrow.
Oh, okay, good, so.
We are proceeding and moving forward, and after tonight's agenda, we'll have another one to consider, but we need to talk about that for a minute.
Okay, thanks.
One of my biggest fears with the energy performance contract is that, now, Judy, we're still paying off that one from years ago, right?
Almost done. I think this August, it's very close, it's within a year before that one is paid off.
So, we're still paying off of that, and then, you know, again, we were given guarantees, and they didn't work out. We had an energy education program, again, we made a big investment in that some years ago, and again, we didn't get the cost avoidance that was, in a sense, guaranteed with that program, and we also paid for, actually, it was a teacher to, you know, to monitor and help, you know, help, um, create the savings.
I think many districts experienced similar issues, and I think that's why state ed came and changed a number of those standards, just to tighten that up and minimize the risks for the district. So, I think it's a, a different era now for these types of energy performance projects. So, they are closely monitored, SED is reviewing them, and we also have the benefit of having the consultant, who truly is an expert in that field, to monitor it for us. So, you have far less risk in that regard with this round than what you would've seen a decade ago.
Some twenty years ago.
Yeah, just about what it was.
Yeah. Yeah, cause it would take about two years to prove, to build one. Two years to build one, and bill, bill out of about eighteen years, so, there, there has been, I mean, there have been numerous changes in regulations, and I think the board has done some very good due diligence with ECG, with Greg, with our selection process, and also trying to make sure that we look conservatively, not aggressively.
Right, and that monitoring.
Yeah. Yeah, the M&amp;V is much different now than it was before.
Okay. Anyone else? Um, I just, on item B and C, where we were awarding the contracts for the capital construction project, I think it's imperative that we start getting information out to the public in terms of timeframes and whatnot, and posting it on the website, you know, just to let the community know that a lot of things are gonna be off. I know we have done it through the groups, but again, I think a general, out to the public instead of, more than just the specific groups that use the facilities, cause there's a lot of people who'll come over and use a tracker, or just fields and stuff for walking, that I think we need to, to let the public know when those dates are out there, and send SN, SNN notifiers out, and again, the unavailability of certain buildings and whatnot.
Yeah, one, one of those things, the firm up, the timeline, we'll start with the kickoff meeting, which is, I think, Friday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, we're one day closer. Uh, at ten o'clock, I believe, right? So, that is when the, the ability to mobilize will be discussed, so that we can really become firm on when each location is going to be able to start. Uh, we'll be bringing communication over later in the day to make sure that, once they have a plan, that that starts going on, yes.
Okay, good. Even if it's, you know, I'd rather have a longer timeframe out there than, and we can always adjust it, but at least get something out there of what our timeframe is, so that the community is aware of that, and there's, you know, I'd hate for people to say, jeez, I never knew anything about it, and made plans for different things.
First of all, the people will say.
No, I know, but.
No matter what.
But, but again, we, we promised the community too, that we would have a very robust, uh, web presence about the, the construction project, and what we're doing, and when, and whatnot, so I think we need to, to keep to that. Okay? Anyone else? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? We already did the professional person now.
Actually, I have a que, can I ask a question? Cause I realized it was, um, it looks like, are we increasing AIS services to one of these appointments?
Yeah, that was the additions in the budget with the point four middle school and the point four elementary, so it's combined for a point eight position, cause it's gonna be sixth grade in the middle school, and then the AIS math is at the, um, the elementary.
Great, I'm just very, very pleased to see and hear that.
Okay. Item number twelve, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through D.
So moved.
That's the first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, oh, Charmaine had it, I think. I'm going quick tonight, I'm sorry.
I wish everyone the best of luck, but, um, particularly Mr. Carroll.
Yep.
I do too. I mean, we, I've lived through four transportation supervisors, and he by far has been the best, and, um, sometimes, for whatever reason, the transportation department can be a little bit tough to handle, and, um, I think he's done a great job.
He will be.
Certainly.
Definitely, um, our loss is Shen's gain, so.
That's for sure.
And, and one of the, one of the things I know from our budget season, uh, because Director Carroll will be going to Shen, uh, he has been doing a lot of work in the maintenance area to cover some of our reductions in the past, that I'd recommend to the board that we are going to probably present to you a restructuring of the transportation department in positions, so that we have the appropriate positions with the supervisory staff that we have, uh, at our disposal to address some of those concerns, so that we have the right people in the right position. I will probably be bringing them forward either at the next meeting or the organizational meeting, uh, because one of the things is, is we will have to do a posting for this. We have definitely some interested candidates internally as well, uh, and then we'll move forward as swiftly as possible, because this is a critical time, um, as we start to gear up for the next year. So, you'll be seeing that come out tomorrow.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Uh, item number thirteen, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence, correspondence action, item A.
So moved.
It's the first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Now, we, the board would recognize anyone, any of the visitors that would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Okay. Um, future meetings, um, our next regular Board of Education meeting is June eighteenth, um, then our organizational meeting, July first, and then, uh, the next board meeting after that is August thirteenth. Other, um, events are, as Charmaine mentioned, the concert tomorrow night here at the high school, we have the moving up ceremony on the twenty-sixth, I believe, at eight-thirty, and graduation at six-thirty on the twenty-seventh at the SEFQ Arena. Um, also, the Audit Committee met last evening, um, we received a report from our internal auditor on an updated risk assessment, and, and also, Cusick and Company, um, did the, a presentation on their commencement of our annual audit. They'll be in next week, following week? To do their preliminary control testing, and then back in August for a week or so to do the actual transaction testing. Yes. And then, they'll be ready to present at the October first, uh, board meeting. All right.
Just a couple of questions. I know with Ms. Beck being here, I'm going to take the opportunity that, in the coming year, and this isn't necessarily for a discussion tonight, but we do have a NISBA conference, which is a state conference, which one of our fellow board members, who's the president of New York State School Boards Association, will be opening the session and also running the sessions there. But we have, at this point, just because it would be located in New York City, reserved opportunities for the board members to go. We want everybody to know, there's no commitment to it because we will be able to remove or cancel those reservations at this point. But we wanted everybody to think about it, look at their calendars, because it will be a discussion the board will have to have, most likely, preferably at the organizational meeting or the August meeting, because we wanted to try, as we're going away, if members of the board are there, we wanted to try to keep everybody in the same location. And this conference in this location can be quite difficult if you don't really get ahead of the game. So I just wanted to let the board know that. Any cancellation fees, because there is some cancellation fees that could be associated, we have already established that because we do a lot of board training throughout the year, that those fees would be applied to any future training as the courtesy that NISBA has done. We just want to try to get information to them as quick as possible so that whether we need the reservation or not, we open it up for somebody else. So if you can be thinking about that, I believe that the earliest travel day would be October 25th to be down there for the law conference, which would be on the 26th, and I think the conference goes to 26th, 27th, and 28th. So, and then we'd be making travel because we'd also have to arrange travel arrangements, too. So if you could think about that between now and our next time gathering and so forth. In addition, just to make you aware, the district is looking at some of our field trip procedures. I know with the audit committee, we've asked them to look into that in the coming year, but we may also be looking at really working with one vendor as a district moving forward. So that's something that you might hear about in the next couple of weeks and so forth. But it's something we need to make people aware, that we have to do what's in the best interest of the district and its students to guarantee that we're doing it above board as well as for the best possible financial pricing for our students. So we just want to make you aware. And then we'll talk about that more in the future.